Welcome to the Cypher Meeting for October 30th. We call to order at 6:34 PM. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast. Discussion regarding the police station parcel subdivision proposal?
I'll have you join us.
So, since the last time we talked to you all about this, the actual proposal, the second proposal,
it should have been in the packet first time, was added in. So, you should have two surveying proposals now to look at. And there's also a representative from the dog shelter, the Friends of the Dog Shelter here, if you have any specific questions for them.
Thank you for joining us. I skimmed through them. Is the body of work and the two proposals generally identical?
One's much more specific.
Yeah, the second one, the one that we didn't have, the Daniel, I think it's Daniel Saul's. Much more specific on the work, the phases, the cost.
He actually came out and looked at the site with me to try to figure out the best way to make that work. And it looks like the best way is to have two A and Rs, approval not required. So, it would, basically, we would create the parcel, which would become the road layout, and then from that, we would also create the A and R for the buildable parcel behind it.
Probably should have asked this before. Do we have, we don't have a map of that parcel, do we? Handy?
Um, not handy.
Not handy. I can get it for you.
I was just trying to visualize it last time, and it wasn't working for me without...
Give me one second. I'll put it in your emails.
If it's easy to get. While you're doing that. Questions, thoughts?
So, I just want to mention, I know you mentioned that somebody from the Friends of the Frank County Regional Dog Shelters here, but while they're the ones that prompted this and are looking for us to do this, we are also required, we open this up for bids.
Correct.
We have to have all bids come in, we have to evaluate all the bids, do a rubric, through a criteria, and then make a recommendation of, you know, what goes forward. I don't know of many people that are looking for that property, but I wanted to, you know, put that out there, that once it becomes open, if we do that and we, you know, subdivide it, it might be, show, people might be interested in it after the fact.
Another animal shelter could, could be interested or whatever.
No idea. So, just, just to put that out there, that it'll have to go through a process, you know, an open bidding process for everybody to put in their, their best foot forward.
Yeah. I did, I gave you all a draft attachment A, so I started going through, I used our 18 Pleasant Street RFP as kind of the template, and I started going through and changing out language for if you decide to move forward with this. And I know one of the concerns, the last time we briefly touched upon this, was just how would we, what would that rubric look like in terms of figuring out what could go there? And so, specifically under project use, this was a section that I added with some draft language on how we could make sure that whatever goes into this buildable parcel would be compatible with public safety uses, it would complement the animal control services that you're all discussing in terms of regionalization, and it wouldn't, the use itself wouldn't come with traffic complications, like there's no 18-wheelers coming in and out of that road, things like that, not like substantial traffic increases that could cause, you know, us to have other issues.
Brian Smith was nice enough to send us that parcel, so we can take a look at it. Without reading them side by side?
My, my computer's not working, so I'm not looking at the same thing you are, but if, in my head, it's, it's kind of, yeah, basically straight, kind of staying to, is that the south end, kind of the left turn, left, left turn, that's the word, left part of the parcel, while keeping enough of a buffer, there's kind of a slope there. We wouldn't want to obviously have the road layout be in the slope. So, there would be kind of a section that would be a parcel that we would retain that would not be usable along the edge of that slope.
So, just to clarify, you're thinking the, the road layout will continue straight where it is. You're saying we'll retain some property on the left-hand side along there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Not for a purpose other than just the road layout shouldn't be up to the slope, you know what I mean? So, it's not like it's going to be usable. It would really just be, you know, carving out where the road layout goes.
There's a top line, I think, on the left of it there.
Yeah.
It's probably right in that area.
Yeah. Knowing the, the intention of the, the purpose of the property, I don't have any concern with going forward. I did review both of those proposals. I did like the second one, the one that we didn't have the last time. It was, one, cheaper by a few hundred dollars, and, two, it was very thorough in talking about all of the various steps and attendance at planning board meetings, and, you know, there was a lot to it, so you can, you have some, some teeth to it. I would recommend we go with that one.
I'm in agreement with Scott.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you need a motion to award.
Pete, do you have a question?
Yes.
Come on, come on up, please.
Come on up.
Yes, please.
I was told to ask, was there any consideration for noise with the neighboring residents as far as the dogs, owls, kennels parking during the day or at night, are they going to be out at night?
So, I think we would have, we would have conversations about that. The trees, there will be trees remaining in between and under railroad tracks, and then more trees between, like, anyone on the line's way. But there would be conversation, you know, we could definitely include some things in the RFP around that if people wanted to, of, you know, times that, you know, dogs or other animals or whatever would be allowed to be outside. That could, that could be included.
Yeah. All, all those have to come out through the RFP.
Okay.
Yeah, but that's a good concern to note.
Yeah, the only thing we would be discussing tonight is whether or not we're awarding somebody a contract to go do some surveying and allow the property to be split. And then we start the actual process of creating an RFP, and what do we want in that, and what are the concerns, and what do we want to ensure is addressed by any person that wants to bid on it.
Okay.
The other thing that Irving, I don't believe, has right now is a noise bylaw, and so, it's obviously a separate thing than this, but that is something that the town could consider adopting in the future, which obviously wouldn't just address this, it would address a whole bunch of situations, but it would outline broadly, just, you know, across the board, what those expectations are around noise.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. But, yeah, this would just be plans to subdivide into proposed legal way to adopt.
Correct. A right-of-way, yeah.
To give frontage, I think it'd be a legal way.
Or a legal way.
A regular roadway, adopted roadway, right?
Yeah.
To provide frontage for the new subdivided plot.
Do you like a motion to move that along?
Yes, please.
I will make a motion that we award the surveying contract to Daniel Saul's land surveying of Sunderland, Mass. for the survey work at 71 French King Highway, tax map 1-3-24, in the amount of $6,000, and to authorize Mariah Kurtz to execute any and all agreements. I will second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Glenn, there's a note on here about the number of bounds that they're going, monuments they're going to set. Have you seen that?
No.
Approximately 250-foot roadway, and only the southerly side would be monumented resulting in six bounds. Would you want them on both sides?
If, if the other side's a slope, I don't think we need to, but all our roads are typically done on, on both sides. If we want to keep it the same, yeah, we probably should.
So, if we wanted the same, it would normally have both if it's a slope, not, just for those who are not sitting in the room. It is 250 a bound extra, so if we want those, then we could...
Look at that at that point. Yeah, and we could look at a, a line item that we currently have, of where that could come out of, and add that on.
Okay.
I mean, I get why we would want them to stay uniform, but it's also, it's a budding a slope that will not be used, you're, there's no...
Yeah, I'm, I'm all right with it, just, just for that reason, I'm just saying typically they are both sides.
Yeah.
But because it is a slope on the other side, I'm all right with them just on the line.
We have time to figure that out.
Once we get there, we can, yeah, work with them too, when you're, you can out there and see it in the field and see if you think we still need them or don't need them.
Yeah.
Just wanted to note it, so we do that. Okay? Anything else on that?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we want to jump down to the discussion of month energy procurement options?
Yeah.
It's number 10. Hi, Jen, you want to come up? Looking at an alternate supplier through Constellation, who's partnering with MMA?
Yep, through that contract.
Is, do you recall, Brian, is this where we had done alternate energy right before you started?
No.
Wasn't Constellation? Not, not MMA, but...
I don't know if Constellation was involved.
Okay.
But that...
It wasn't this program, I know that. Okay.
So, what this program is, is a collaborative effort between municipalities throughout the state who have joined together to bulk purchase the energy supply. And if we purchase through the program, you have the ability to lock in for fixed rates for the periods that Jennifer was able to get us pricing for, can help prevent the experience of the peaking that we experienced in the last 12 months. But it does not necessarily guarantee a specific savings. There is a comparison in pricing that we sent over to these pricing.
So, during the highs, you'll have season savings, but during the lows, you might be, like, a little bit higher. But at least you know what you're going to pay throughout the year.
You can budget.
So, it's easier, it's typically, it's an advantage for budgeting purposes.
Do we have a sense of maybe last year or in prior years, what our average price per...
I included that spreadsheet, it showed all the different rates of what they were in the past. And on that, in that, the pricing sheet also gave what, I gave them all of our bills, so they took off all of our, what our usage was. So, they gave us basically a rough year, an entire year total, I think it was like $129,000, I don't have my computer on me, but... And I did ask too, if you decided to back out of the contract, there would be some sort of penalty, but they do allow to take off as many accounts, you just have to leave one account on that, and since we have 28 accounts, that is an option, so, it's flexible.
28 accounts. Get me every time, I know, all streetlights and stuff are their own accounts and different things, I believe.
I include at the school, all departments, I include at every single, yep, every single department.
EV chargers fall into this too, or do we separate those, because of the EV rate?
They're on, well, the ones that are on their own meters are on their own accounts, and they would be included.
But they are included.
Correct.
Okay. Did I miss, yeah, I don't think we have what you're talking about. So, we have the 12, 24, 36 month, the two different time periods when it was polled for what the costs would be?
Yep, and then there was another attachment as well.
Did I miss a spreadsheet?
Yeah, I think so. It didn't come.
Yeah, I'm not saying...
It was a document, okay. It was a document that I included.
Yeah, I just don't think we have it to see, because there's nothing in here, I see another sheet, but it has no data.
Memo's in the packet.
We see the memo.
And that attachment that I sent the memo over with, Ryan, I believe there was two attachments. Yeah, that's, that's the Excel spreadsheet, and so if you open that up, it'll give you all the normal rates.
Send that to us? Okay, thank you. He's sending it now, if we didn't have it yet.
I thought I sent you both of them, or all of the documents.
Well, maybe I missed it.
So, it's the same embedded one. I think you're right. I thought that was smart. This was in the email.
Oh, they're from different dates, I think, one's from the 30th, one's from the 19th, so those are the rates that have changed since then.
The one that I just had was the 30th.
Okay, just sent one more spreadsheet to you.
There they are.
The fixed would be the, the new energy rates, and then the monthly are the ones that we actually paid, if you look under National Grid and our, and the ever-sourced ones.
So, we had all the historical data to put in there, compare it comparatively? Okay.
Yeah, they, they have all that data for...
Oh, nice.
For each utility.
And then probably the only piece we just don't have is, like, usage by account, at what rate to get seasonality and variability in demand, right?
For each account?
Yeah, I mean, like, over those periods, like, some of those times throughout the fixed period, there was higher rate on a monthly rate payer, and that's what we were, but we don't know if our demand was high when it was high rate, or what, you know what I mean?
That variability.
To compare the two of them. To compare, to, to really understand if, versus the average monthly price, you know, is it favorable, unfavorable? It's not that simple. It's close, I don't know historically where we would land. I mean, generally, they seem to be, just on a straight average, very close, if not.
Yeah.
Plus or minus every period.
You know, the other, the other concern I have, which you would, it was already addressed, is that as long as we leave one of our 28, if we're dissatisfied with it after the first three months, we can choose our one account that we want to leave on that fixed rate that is advantageous for us, and remove the other 27 if need be. If it's going well, and, you know, the rates are fine, then we ride out the contract for however long we choose, whether it's the 24, 12, 24, or 36-month.
Yeah, when I did ask that question, she said, "In my 15 years of doing this, I've not had a municipality pull out of it." But again, like, could be a sales pitch.
Yeah, it wouldn't be a good sales pitch if she said, "Everybody leaves after six months." I mean, when you're talking about, we've had such volatile ups and downs, just for budgeting purposes of knowing where we are, for the next, I'd say for, looking at the three options, I would go with the three-year, so we have some, you know, I know it's like, you, you look at the annual kilowatt budget, it's a little bit, $900 more, but fixed for three years, to know that we can project out a budget for three years and know what we have coming down the pipeline, and not have to worry about the variances year in and year out, I'd say we do it.
When getting to the 36-year, almost the same as 12. I mean, a hundred, a hundred and a half cents.
Yeah, I'm talking a few hundred dollars, yeah. I mean, that's, that's wild.
And what can you predict in three years? And that's, you know...
It'll be higher.
Exactly.
Probably reliably.
Right, and that's why I wouldn't go with a 12, I mean, we'd be right back to it if we would, did a 12. If we were going to do it, I would suggest to the 36.
Yeah, to have a constant, knowing what we're going to be up against in the next couple of years with our ceiling, and being able to budget and forecast out, and know what our hard numbers are.
So, in terms of energy purchasing, your options are to stay on the market like we are today, and allowing the utility company to do it for you. You can join an aggregation program with other municipalities, and there's an exemption in 30B for that, or we can write an IFB and conduct a full procurement ourselves. But we'd be the only entity purchasing in that procurement, so you'd have to be our kilowatt-hours that...
I don't like option C, so let's skip option C.
Let's drop that one off the table, that's not an option.
Option C is non-viable.
It's an option, but it's not an option.
Sounds like MMA has invented the wheel and sufficiently inflated it for us.
Ah, yeah, I think so, and it rolls, so... This is only supplies, this is the full, this is not transmission, right? This will be just the supply side?
Correct. Your distribution remains National Grid, never so strict.
Distribution, sorry, yeah, okay. So, this will just be the supply side that's fixed?
Correct.
I know that's where more of the volatility is, but...
Yeah, right.
So, obviously, it moves a little every day, but we have to set this at some point if we're going to do it.
Yep.
And this is locking it in effective for January 1?
December 31st.
Is it December?
I mean, no, sorry, October, it doesn't say October 31st in your memo?
October 31st.
Tomorrow, that's what I meant to say. If we vote it tonight, it can lock it in as early as tomorrow.
Correct, exactly. And she said it could change, like, hundreds of a cent.
But it won't start until when? When will we start on the new rate with them?
It would take, I think, about like a month to get cycled through.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because all these say start date December 23rd.
Right, you lock in at that rate, but then by the time that you get signed up and the rate goes effective, I think it's about a month transition.
Yeah, those two say 12, 1, when I look at the full date.
I was thinking it was end of year, but it's just about a month, okay.
Just about a month, I see.
To get everything switched over.
Any other questions? Are we, sounds like we're leaning towards the three-year?
Yes, I am.
Do you, well, you, why don't you want to make a motion, or you want me to? I'll make a motion that we engage with the month energy program with Constellation for a 36-month term for fixed electricity pricing. with the Mune Energy Program with Constellation for a 36-month term for fixed electricity pricing. You said you can lock it tomorrow?
Yes.
As of 10/31. At a rate, do we want it not to exceed 14 cents, just in case it fluctuates? Are we good? I don't think it's going to fluctuate that much.
No, it won't.
Yeah, not to exceed 14 cents. And authorize Treasurer Jennifer Acorn to execute all necessary documents.
Second.
Anything else you needed in that? All those in favor?
Aye, aye. Thank you for doing that work.
Absolutely, happy to. Thank you.
Appreciate it. With that, it's about 7:01. Do we want to get started with a joint meeting?
Yes.
Come on up. I'll call the order. If y'all want to join.
Don't be skewed.
Call the joint meeting with the Finance Committee and the Capital Planning Committee to order at 7:02 PM.
She was hoping she got to keep it.
Oh, that's right. This is the same, it just has the color track changes versus the PDF doesn't? Is that right?
I sent you an updated copy, I believe, this afternoon. But the one I sent you over the weekend did not have those three dates. I got those from FinCom afterwards.
So they are ads, okay.
Correct.
Gotcha. Welcome, everybody. So the first item is review of the FY25 Budget Planning Document Giraffes. I'm going to start with the budget calendar. Got to put it closest to both chairs. We can switch to lapel mics if you prefer. So I think you all have the printout, which is updated from what was originally sent out. Just looking that over, if anybody has anything that looks different or of concern on the plan.
I guess I just have a question for Capital Planning. The standalone meetings were scheduled for the Town Hall. And I didn't know if that was confirmed by Capital Planning, that those are the, that's the location and the time that you all wanted, or if you wanted me to find a different meeting location.
Yeah, I think that's, that works, Town Hall.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And just for Finance Committee, I added three dates for us. They are all on Mondays. I hope that works. If not, we can email each other, we'll just do an email and figure out. I picked a 6:30 start time, but if you would like it later, we can do 7. 6:30, good, okay.
I like the addition of color, Brian.
I can make it whatever, I was told green is maybe not the best, but we can change it to whatever colors you want.
It's good, it's very Christmasy.
Who doesn't like green?
Those are colorblind.
I was going to say, colorblind, green and red are the same.
Oh, okay.
I said, you know, I can't read green because I'm colorblind and.
So I can change it to whatever color people would like.
Just to, just to be me. Figured Christmas Day and New Year's, you can go red and green.
Exactly. Green and red are the colors of money.
There's a lot of green on here, I'm not feeling that.
I was going to say, wow. I'd rather see green than more red.
Right. We'll have enough red in the process. So there's some budget workshops that you've scheduled tentatively or planned for departments to come in and get some help, advice, assistance.
Correct.
In November, and then Capital will do the open capital article review on Sunday 14th.
Right.
Thursday. And the new review will start on January 4th.
Right.
And then Thursday, we'll have our regular board business on the 8th. We'll have to figure out what we're doing over the Christmas break because we have our normally scheduled on Christmas Day. So we put one in somewhere else that week or week before, whatever we need to do. But then on the 11th, we'll have a joint meeting. Public Works, Public Safety, both Capital and Operating.
In the past, I had, I demised or listed the different functional areas under each of those categories. Is it necessary beyond just listing the larger category? Does that can add that?
I don't have a preference. All I remember is that we were talking, when we met with you and talked over this, I think it was with Capital, we had gone through those to try to like placeholder like time slots and figure out the total time of the meeting. So, you know, was that four 15-minute blocks for Public Works or six and then two for Public Safety? I don't remember that level of detail to kind of give some structure to it.
Right.
I don't think we got into it that heavily. We decided 15 minutes a group. But I don't think we ever discussed that like Highway could need 30 minutes because they're a larger department or there was just 15 minutes a group is what we came up with.
I thought that's how we got to the matchups because we redid from what we used to.
We played with the matchups for a little bit, I don't think we ever came to any consensus.
I don't have an old one that has those on it to kind of refer to in front of me right now, but and I don't know if we are worried about that level of detail tonight, that's up to you guys.
I'm not tonight.
Issue it to folks and translate what that means to the departments, boards, and commissions who need to understand it. When to be where.
I think the target was generally around five minutes or so on operating budget discussion, about five minutes on capital discussion for each grouping we would normally do.
Right.
And so, you know, Public Works, that might be six groupings, I think. There's a lot between building your grounds, and then you've got highway, and then you've got water, and you've got wastewater and it's all of that. But just that guidance, that's kind of what we're trying to target. And then if we had any items that needed to carry over, we were going to have them come back to the final session to continue if we weren't able to get through them in those time slots.
You need to say final, is that the March 11th?
Yeah, I was just jumping through that. So then the 22nd is our regular meeting, and the 29th would be the next joint budget meeting. So basically, the idea was to have only budget one night and only board business the other. Worst case, if there's something small, we could do 6:30 to 7, but to make sure it's not something we're going to continue after. Maybe you have a question, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, the only potential conflict I have is that span from February 22nd through the 26th, I might be out of state on, with a family commitment. But I might be able to zoom in if we, or something depending on what travel plans look like when they're finalized.
Okay. That 22nd is a tentative date, given that the 19th is a holiday, so we could potentially do it the week before if we needed to, or maybe carry it, we can adjust. And then Friday was basically follow-ups for many of those sessions. It was due Friday, March 1st. And I kind of jumped ahead, but continuing through, we had education, we had the other stuff. 26th was Capital, all the Capital feedback from Capital Planning. Culture, Rec, and Health and Human Services. And so then, March 11th was, basically, that's the next one, I think, right? That's the.
Yeah.
I don't think, okay. I feel like the 26th is short. As in topics, I thought we, I thought we had four sessions.
Culture and Rec, Health and Human.
Yeah, I don't feel like that's.
That's quick.
February 26th?
Uh, yeah.
I think we did that on purpose when we were planning things out, because that way, if we did have to have someone come back, that night left us a bit of wiggle room.
Instead of making it wait until the 11th.
Yeah, yeah, we had purposely done it that way.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Just for Capital, as I'm just kind of looking at this, on the December 14th meeting where we're going to meet with department heads, could I suggest that be at the library? Just because we'll have more space instead of trying to cram in downstairs.
Sure.
Yes, please. And could you, would you mind reaching out to Abby and making sure it's available? Thank you.
Is the January 4th Capital Review, is that just reviewing the requests as the committee? Or are we expecting feedback from departments? That's going to happen during the budget reviews, right? So that's just us looking at all the requests holistically?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because all of the presentations are going to be Capital and Operating together, for sure.
March 11th was the we repeated the Capital. Oh, that was the overall, where was Capital? Capital's review of their capital recommendation? Did I miss that in here?
I would assume.
I think that's what I was expecting on the 26th, because I thought we were going to wrap the overall reviews on the 26th. So if we had our Public Works, Public Safety, the first round, second was General Government and all the other auxiliary things that that covers usually, or we cover during that.
Thought that was.
And Education.
March 7th?
I thought that was March 7th.
The Capital Planning Committee meeting on March 7th?
I'm thinking about when is Capital Planning reviewing the recommendations with the Select Board and the Finance Committee?
The final meeting on March 11th.
Yeah. So they'll put their stuff together, have their own meeting on the 7th so that they can come prepared for the 11th to make a recommendation.
Yep. Should I clarify that?
Yes, because to me, it looks like we're all just reviewing the final on the 11th and the 25th. Like we're going through the final draft document, like it's already been reviewed. Or initial recommendations.
Right.
So, yeah, that's fine, if that's where it is, that's where I was missing. And on the 26th, I think just at the end, you know, any any carryover that we have, right, for departments? Though it's not due until the 1st, so. Unless we want to put that on the 11th? Or both?
I think you can leave it as a placeholder on both. If they've responded and we're ready to call them back, we have the 26th available. If not, it can be the 11th.
Okay, we'll make those changes.
So the 18th, we have just the board, not a joint? And then 25th, we're back to joint? Does that make sense? Because that's the first ATM draft review, right?
Right.
It's a collective question, I don't have an answer to it.
No, I, I hear the question, and I'm thinking it may be the 11th is the first time that we're all going to have a chance to sit down and review the entire totality of the draft. It might make sense to have the 11th, the 18th, and the 25th all joint meetings. Because it's not going to be an easy budget to put together. And just to think that we can pull it together in two meetings, I don't think is.
Well, and the 11th is going to be the Capital Recommendation, which is going to be lengthy in and of itself. So we don't even, I mean, we'll have a draft operating, but we won't have a draft, we won't have the Capital, which will inform the ATM the following meeting, right?
Yeah, so do the 18th as a joint meeting?
That's what I'm thinking. For seven as well?
Yeah. Okay. Do you want to leave, since we don't have a regular, that was supposed to be our
I know.
A regular meeting? Do you still want to start ours at 6:30 in case there's anything?
Yeah, our meetings might start earlier on some of these nights. I'll just leave the joint, unless you guys want me to, for now, I'll just leave the joint. We'll leave the joint on this calendar and then.
Say, leave the room open for regular business and then.
We'll post ours, so, you know, ahead of that if needed.
Fair enough.
Is that enough time? Do we? Yeah, I guess. I was going to say, you can't really put, enough time is a relative question. I was just thinking about, should we be pushing up the Capital Recommendations to the 26th meeting? But we won't have gone through all the budgets yet, so it's not probably realistic. Because we won't have heard from every department, so you won't have gone through necessarily all of the different Capital items to review, so. Any other concerns, questions, thoughts on the calendar? For now, looks good. Just if we have to as we go?
Yeah. So the, it's okay to release as amended?
Yep.
Yes.
Thank you.
I believe you said February 12th would be, we should have education by then, that timing should be okay. Is that right, when we were talking? Okay.
Yeah, my understanding is the school department has already begun their budget planning process with the school committee. So that should be underway in the coming months. So the only question is whether or not the technical school will have finished its assessment process. And usually, we get it that week. So this is consistent with when we've done it in past years.
Okay.
This past year was maybe the tightest on that because there was the change in the Governor's Office. And the Governor's budget had been released until, I want to say it was like that morning or just the Friday before. So we don't anticipate that challenge this year.
Okay. Guidance documents? FY25 Capital Budget Guidance Memo?
So I tried to call attention at the beginning of the memo for the Capital purposes to the. So I tried to call attention at the beginning of the memo for the capital purposes to the December 14th meeting, where capital wants a presentation so that departments don't go straight to FY25 requests without going back and looking at their current appropriations and projects that are already underway. So hopefully I've captured it in a way that makes sense to you all.
If basically any funding out there for capital to talk about.
Right.
Brian, under the FY2025 submission requirements, can we change that, second to last, please attach additional quotes? Can we change that so it's along the lines of a requirement of at least one quote? Because there are some that we've gotten in the past that have been submitted, and it's a ballpark. But it's not like a, it's a we want it done this year, but here's the ballpark for it project. It's not a placeholder type project. So if we can at least make it clear that at least one quote needs to be submitted.
Okay. That is for an FY25 request?
Correct, yeah.
Beyond that, it can be a placeholder number?
Yeah, for this year, I'd like to get away from doing placeholder quotes, but...
I get it, but I don't think too much work quoting with our vendors for, if we're not sure, and then inflation and all that can be challenging.
There's some other conversations that we've been having where we need capital to maybe hear presentations on requests that aren't fully developed, maybe they're not FY25 requests. But we need, the staff needs guidance, or the boards and commissions need guidance as to what is going to be required to get this project to a commitment and get a ballpark for when it could be programmed. And so I do know as part of this process, we need to find a way to have that conversation too. Because there's several things sort of in the wings that need attention, but they don't fall into an existing appropriation or something that must happen in FY25.
Got it.
I think, I'm sorry, go ahead. Okay, I was going to say, I think the last time we spoke, we were going to add wording in there about if this is a project that needs to happen this year.
I was just reading the FY25 submission requirements, looking for that same language. Because I know you had thrown it out there saying some sort of language that says if it's an emergency need, that must be addressed. You know, the safety concerns, the department won't function if this doesn't happen. Those need to be highlighted and not just prioritized, like, oh, this is a, you know, this is our number one priority. But sometimes there are must haves. Those need to be called out.
Yep. I can't make that clarification.
Thanks.
Of course.
And I think on, just in general, on the quoting or estimating, you know, the variety of projects and stuff, if there are questions about what that may take, depending on the scope and scale, to get to a number, bring it to the capital planning committee and get some feedback. You know, if that's a big process to get there, then let's talk about what might be sufficient if it's not that. But to your point, there are things that the capital planning committee needs to review, or we'd like them to review before the submission due date. That discussion needs to happen before then, so departments know what to or not to work into what they're submitting. So I guess back to the calendar, is there a date you are already planning to meet in November? Or can we pencil something in in November to have that conversation with capital?
Would that fall? I guess I'm questioning, is there a reason why that couldn't take place at the December meeting?
That's after their due, the requests are already due. So we need, departments in general, we need some guidance on thoughts on project viability, whether they should happen. If so, how do we think that submission should be, or what's the timing, you know? Tentatively, where do we think some of these larger projects may or may not land? Or are they, at this point, parked? So rather than putting effort into getting enough information to put that request in, or to fit it into the the documents due on the 11th, December 11th. So I was thinking it was pre-December 11th, so if there's actions, maybe it'll still take longer than December 11th by the time we have feedback because of the scale of what we might have to do. But at least we know, and we've started down that path before the due date.
To be honest, I wouldn't mind seeing their full list, but just having them prioritized as this must occur this year, or this is high, and then we can go from there. Because I'd hate to have them trim down their list only to find out that, oh, we forgot something. Or we deemed this as not important, and it was important.
I think, bigger picture, it's understanding from the capital planning committee, where are these in the long range plan, or where do we think they might be? So do we put any effort into scoping them and starting to understand what a timeline would be, and where the costs are, and how much those costs are? Or are they right now in a parking lot, given our current situation, and we don't know when? So let's not invest effort in. Do you want, give an example, please?
Complete streets. There's an approved plan from three years ago that we've successfully used to secure improvement funds for pedestrian infrastructure throughout town. We are eligible to apply again for up to $500,000 to do the next round of priority streets. We need to talk to somebody to get a feedback as to whether or not these streets are the priorities in terms of the plan. If needs or priorities have changed in the last three years, we need to know that. And the rounds to apply are every six months. And so knowing is this an FY26 project will dictate when we're even seeking the funding to apply for it, so that we're not relying on town appropriations. So to even talk about the exploratory work, the planning work, any of that, it wouldn't even make sense unless we knew capital said there was even capacity for the town to work on that, and that they would even recommend working on that. So there's more high level projects in the future that we need to have some substantive conversation with decision makers around where are we anticipating capacity, where are we anticipating priorities? Or no, are they being parked? So that we focus on something else.
Okay. I think just to add to that is, there may be some matching funds that are needed. So how does that fit into the, you know, where does that make it end up on the timeline? And let's say it's '27, anticipated, well, we can apply so many times, the cycles for that funding. So do we want to back up and start applying for that funding in FY25? So that we have four opportunities to try to get that funding to then have the project done by '27, but also understand, if we get the funding, we may have to bump that up a little. Or do we start working on it in '27, knowing if we want the funding, we're going to try for two years, and if we don't get it, have to do it anyway, or reevaluate, right? And so there's some of all this lead time leading up to some of the bigger things. And the ways we approach them, it's kind of needing a ballpark on where does it even land? Before we put a bunch of effort into putting it together?
There's also some benefit to some basic fleshing out of the project, because you have no idea what the pipeline is if you don't. If you've got, these are the four or five projects that we can look at over the next year, and we've got a pile of 30 projects back here that we have no idea how big they are, how much time they take, when they can be done, who can do them, then we might as well have not even got any information about them at all. Because it's not going to be valid information. If we flush it out a little bit, we can think, okay, these are the projects that we're working on, and I know that we're working on something that's similar to that, because we looked at it earlier. Maybe this ties in with that. This is a grant, well, maybe, I remember we looked at something last summer that was a grant that might fit with this. I'm just saying that any preliminary work that we do on something, not fleshing the full thing out, but any preliminary work that we do on it is going to help more than hurt.
I think, for me at least, part of the concern is, I suspect I know a couple of the projects, I'm sure there's like, there's complete streets that are hanging out there. There's the highway building that's hanging out there. There's, REC had a park, they wanted to redo Vets Park. And I think for me, part of the problem is, right now, everything is so compartmentalized. And I think for capital at least, we need to see that from every single department. And if right now, it's, you know, Department A is the one who's kind of waving their hand the loudest, and, you know, making the biggest noise, saying, hey, I need this. For us to strategically plan years out, every department has those kind of needs. I mean, the school's talking about an entire HVAC and roof project, that we have no idea what that, you know, what that could cost. So I think it's very hard to plan for a specific project or two, when as capital, we know that there's 10 of those big projects out there. But those groups aren't coming to us in the same way that other groups are. So I think, I see what you, I can see both sides of the coin here, because and that's kind of why at the last capital meeting, I had suggested looking for, whether it be a grant or funding from the town, to actually do kind of similar to what REC did, which is where they put together a great proposal of, this is everything we got, this is everything we want to do, and this is how we think we're going to do it. They basically did like their own little REC department master plan. And it was great until COVID hit, which kind of threw a wrench into it for them. But I had proposed doing something like that for every single department. So that we could put something together cohesively, and everybody knew there was this master plan that lived and breathed. And this year, it's highways year, and this year, it's recs year, and this year, it's schools year. And so we have a really cohesive, I think that's for capital. For me, we've always struggled to have a cohesive plan moving forward.
So I was just going to say, I've got a meeting early next week with Mariah, and part of that meeting is going to be going over the master plan and all of the projects that are in the pipeline that we know of, all of the ones that we've completed, just updating that. But I think this dovetails into that conversation for all departments. And I don't know how we get there. I know last year, she was looking at a way to try and coordinate in the capital five-year plan into the master plan, and dovetail it in so you can see by quarter, so that you can break down capacity of, you know, staff, you know, bandwidth, and what sort of projects can happen. I can bring that, you know, conversation back up, we're meeting, I think, Monday or Tuesday, I think Tuesday, to start that work. And I think I'll bring up that conversation about how do we fold in at least a five-year plan of pending capital projects? And how do we relay that request to all department heads that we are receiving? The capital is receiving those, and then capital can then relay those to the planning department, so that planning can embed them into the whole master plan. So you have one stop shop to look at and see everything on the horizon. And they might be color coded. These are projects that are earmarked, that we want to do, or that we know are possibles, but they're not actually solid yet. But they're on the plan, and we see them, you know, in different forms. So you can quickly at a glance know what your dreams are, what your actual plans are, what your, you know, bandwidth plans are, all in one spot.
Then if that's coming, all coming in on the 11th of December, let's say, then is it fair to assume that the guidance can be that the more flushed out detailed stuff is only the FY25 requests? The other ones can be much more
vague?
Hollow, vague, right.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
They can be, you know, complete streets next round, or they can be, you know...
Don't need a full project plan for everything.
Water, yeah, and maybe there's no date, there's no priority yet, there's none of that, because we haven't gotten there, right? There's no numbers even, right? Highway building, I mean...
So what you're referring to is more what we've always done, which are the placeholders. It would be helpful if a department, like you guys had referenced, funding for complete streets. It would be good to know on that form, whomever, if it's Mariah or Glenn, whoever fills it out, if they want to add extra details, you know, a little bit above and beyond, like, funding for this runs every six months. Here are the dates for applications. Because then that just kind of helps us too, as we go through and look at stuff and go, okay, if we want to approve this, we need to make sure we do it before this window opens up. Or just, you know, like, if there's anything important, date wise or project wise, you know, like, we had to fix this road because of a storm, so it was fixed to get traffic through, but it wasn't a true fix. We may not know, because we see traffic driving on the road, so we think the road's all great. So any of that kind of like detail that they wouldn't necessarily put in, you know, for a regular request, would be helpful.
Okay. Or even runway, this project will take at least five years once it gets started, so you know.
We're working on a new form for that.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know, but, but we're not necessarily going to have and plan in all five years right yet.
Correct.
Until we're a lot closer, so, but we can identify that. This is probably a five-year project from kickoff, so. Bridges and buildings and stuff, that's much larger stuff, in terms of time. So I think we can get that guidance back, and if anyone who'd raise some of those questions, those further questions, we can go from there. There was one adjustment to the submission requirement for FY25 so far, that we just left off on, I believe. Talked a little bit about the description. Anything further on the capital message?
No, I think it looks good. Guys have any questions about it?
Okay, I'm with the revisions in issue.
The FY25 operating budget guidance? Questions, comments?
I'm just reading the first paragraph again, the overview, and it says it in there, but I'm not sure it's stern enough, language. Basically saying that for many years, we've seen budgets where they say, well, these are negotiated raises, or these are things that are out of our control, so they automatically increase the budget. We can't stop those, so whatever our budget was for FY24, we're going to automatically increase it these amounts. And I think it needs to be very clear that those increases, by and large, most likely will come out of the current funding. Because we have to create capacity somewhere. So it's not just an earmark of, well, our, we know of these 12 increases on these 12 lines, so we just add that to the FY24, and that's our starting point. It's, we have to fund these within our current budget, and then where do we, what does it look like in order to balance our budget from there? Looking at the rest of services, you know, for every department.
I completely agree, Scott. The line of operating budget requests should reflect level funding.
Must.
For services, yeah, that's much too soft of a have to, must, required.
Shall is a legal term.
Yeah, shall.
Shall is a legal term.
Shall is good.
And we understand, obviously, you know, things, that's the request. That's the requirement to submit it. Clearly, if we're at a, if there's a structural impasse where they just feel like a department will go under if those parameters are to be met, then that's a discussion we have to have, you know? And that doesn't mean that we are, you know, shuttering doors and shutting down departments, because it can't fit within the current FY24. But that's the ask of trying to make that work first.
Can I, can I challenge that we say for the services currently being offered? Because I think we just said in the last meeting, that's not the reality.
Right, because some of those services may not be offered.
You know, with shall reflect level funding.
Period.
And identify what services may need to change and how. And where those balancing efforts are, right? Because we've got to look at everywhere, what adjustments have to be made in the costs that exist to accommodate the increases that are fixed and will come.
Correct.
And have to be absorbed. And then what does that mean, if anything, to the services that are there? And I think we also said we were looking for, I don't remember the wording we had after the STM, I think it was probably better than I will come off the cuff with, but identify areas in your department that you think are, you know, up for discussion about how... about how they are structured, right? And where, you know, there are services that might not be, you know, normal everywhere else, and we have to maybe consider if we approach them differently than we have in the past, because we can't necessarily afford them the way they are today. And there was much more eloquent wording in that meeting, but if I missed anything in that very vague statement.
I just, I feel it needs to reflect that they need to be prepared to come with cuts that they think they can make. And for services, if they have ideas of how those services can become income generating, they need to be prepared to come and discuss that as well.
To help offset the
Yeah, yeah.
The increases, right? Yeah, because I think right now, some of the challenges are just the two and a half. We know some of our, I mean, even some of the benefit shortfalls right now potentially could exceed our overall levy increase for next year.
Correct.
So that would mean everything else had to go down to balance, so.
And goods and services are going to go up, they're not going to go down, so.
Right, well, maybe electricity.
I have a question.
Yes.
If there are departments that are thinking about possibly starting to charge for a service or eliminating services, is there a way to have a meeting, like towards the end of November, for committees' inputs on those services? Because if we agreed that some of them could be changed or have a cost, it could change their whole budgeting within their department.
I don't think I followed totally, maybe somebody else did, because I'm thinking that we want to hear what those proposals would be during the discussion about the operating budgets.
Right, but that's what I'm saying. If they came to us, these committees, and they said, I want to eliminate X, or I would like to have a cost for X, it could change the way that they budget their overall department for next year.
So we would be doing that while we meet with the departments. They will come and they'll sit before us, and we'll discuss everything. And then I think that if we, if they determine, I'm just going to use REC as an example. If REC came forward and said, we're going to up the fee for Summer Park to $1 million a kid. I'm purposely being very sarcastic. We would sit with them that night, have that conversation, and then we have room towards the end to have them, they can then take that, go back, readjust, and then at the end of the schedule, they can come back and present again.
So, and I was expecting that to be earmarked. So let's say it's REC, we'll just use that example, right? And when we increase the fees that, you know, now we expect to generate $40,000 in revenue, instead of having $40,000 in costs, it would be zero, because it would come out of revenue change. So to bring the potential cost reduction and the potential, you know, change that reflects that.
So I think this is going to be a challenging year, and I hear what you're saying. And I think the ask that I would have is that for FY25 budget, department heads are going to be asked to do a little extra lifting, because you're really looking at, you have two budgets. Because you could have a proposal that says, if we don't change anything, we just look at what our known increased costs are going to be, and we embed those in, and then we make cuts to balance our budget based on FY24's numbers. That's one way of doing it. And you can have that as your standalone, that if nothing changes, that's the budget you present. But then the alternative to bring to that meeting is saying, however, we have opportunities to generate revenue through this, this, and this item. And those have projected revenues of X amount, which would offset any cuts that we need to make. We can therefore keep the services and have that cost revenue. I think having both and having that discussion at the same time. But you start with, if no revenue changes, no revenue changes. And that's what you work with. And then from there, you might have proposals of things that we could consider of changing, when that could be, you know, things that you're offering for a fee, whatever you need to do is revenue generating. But I think to have a, there's no preliminary meeting to do all that. That is the meeting of when they're.
Yeah, I guess I'm just looking at it from a time, because we could be crunching time off of that schedule. And if certain departments knew already that, oh, we might want to talk about this, if they at least had our opinion on it, then they could come with a more solid plan.
When you say bring to the committees and get their input.
If they wanted to charge.
Are you, are you talking about this group, bringing it to this group ahead of that?
Yeah.
To find out if it's something viable to even put the effort into?
Yes, right.
I think right now, any reasonable offer will be brought to the table and considered.
Yeah, it's hard, so just as hard as it is to say, don't bother putting in, because we're not looking to do that. I think, I'll only speak for myself, I'm open to any sort of suggestion for how we balance this budget appropriately, whether that's through fee for service, whether that's through cuts for services that we're no longer going to offer. However we do it, I'm open to all of those discussions. To be able to, in years past, we would pick an item of a budget. We'd say, we like this budget, and we're sort of tentatively agreeing to this budget. We move on to the next portion and the next portion. And we never looked at the totality of it until the very end, and then went, ooh, we're off quite a bit. And then we have to go back through and readjust everything. And so it's really hard to say, we, for me anyways, I like this proposal, or this proposal, or this proposal, until I see the totality of what things look at. I don't, you know, I don't think anybody wants to start charging for anything that we've offered for free for the last 25 years, I mean, nobody, you know, or longer. Unless we get to a point at the budget where we say, well, it's either we charge for the service or we can't give the service. And those are the things I'm going to ask the department heads to look at and just bring forward. We can't do it if we have to cut our budget.
Well, I think we're not, it's not, it's not only, it's not as simple as saying, well, you know, we recommended, you know, 1.8 million override, so we're 1.8 million off of balance. There were increases and changes in service and, you know, five-year look in that.
Yeah.
But on the other hand, it's also not, status quo won't balance it either. You know, there's almost no doubt in my mind, if we tried to just level and add, you know, fixed cost increases, assessments, and salary, and wage changes, we'd be over. Almost, almost no doubt, and still not have any money for capital.
Correct.
Potentially, so there has to be some adjustments. Either to, you know, we're not doing capital anymore, which I don't think is a real answer. Or, you know, some services may have to change, or go, you know, how they are, I'd say go away, but maybe, or become somewhat revenue generating or offsetting to try to, to fill some of those gaps that are there now.
Have we thought of any of the guidelines, excuse me, around the revenue generating or offsetting portions? Like, let's say, Department A does something to generate $40,000. Does that go to the town's budget? Or is it part of Department A's budget? Or is it part of Department A's budget and the town's budget?
It completely depends.
That's kind of, that's kind of what my question is.
Okay, so I can, I'll start on that. I think, okay, that's the premise then, so a couple of things. If a department identifies something that's revenue generating, that a change could make that revenue generating instead of a cost, or revenue generating to reduce the cost, that doesn't mean that that budget will stay where it is and have capacity for something else. That revenue generating could be offsetting the cost, and therefore that overall budget actually goes down, leaving more available budget for other departments that couldn't come up with the revenue generating source. And to choose, for us, and I say other departments, but really for all of us to decide, this department didn't have any, you know, significant cost cuts or revenue generating options. But, you know, these two did. And so with some of what the savings will be, if we do execute those, we can help offset the fixed cost changes that, without cutting services or without some more major adjustment in this other department. And those are the balances we have to do. At the end of the day, it's one pot of money, and it's got to fund it all. And so whether, for the most part, I mean, there were some, I think, enterprise funds, we wouldn't, you know, that's an act of a town meeting to move money in and out. But within the omnibus and some of the other areas, if, well, actually, I'll change that. It's easy for waste, use wastewater for an example. We raise and appropriate to fund all of that, it's not an assessment to monogame. If there was some offset to some of that in some proposal, then that's less raise and appropriate potentially that we need to allocate to wastewater. Then we have that freed up to allocate elsewhere, whether it's capital or, you know, move that around. Because it's all one bucket of money in the raise and appropriate total. Does that make sense?
It does.
So, and I think that's, you're getting at, in totality, it's all of the possible options versus the pool of money we have and the pool of things we want to do with it, and what that costs. Trying to piece together the puzzle, we think, is the best one. It's clear as mud, but it's not simple, unfortunately.
Require a lot of finesse.
Yep, and to Thomas's point, in a short amount of time. Because it's hard to believe we're already back in it, but we practically are, so.
I was just going to say, I might be misremembering this, because this is the budget season that has lasted 10 years. We typically, once all the submissions have been made, and Brian collates them and sends them all out to us, it isn't until, and this is, might be the part that I'm totally remembering improperly, we don't see the totality of that until we're much further along in the process. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Can we see that much, much sooner in the process?
Do you mean the available funds or the subtotal of everything?
All of the above.
The answer is yes.
The whole, the whole.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Can we have that much?
I mean, we're coming at it from a different place, so yeah, why not?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's my concern, is that typically, like I said, we go and we see all these requests, and we don't know the totality of
Right.
what the balance is, what the delta is, until really late in the game. And then we're scrambling, trying to balance whatever that delta was in the last three weeks. Whereas we know this is a different approach that Irving has had to deal with. We need to start doing that balancing dance much earlier.
Yeah.
Yeah, because until last year-ish, generally, that was some small adjustments.
Correct.
We know now it's adjustments no matter what.
Correct.
So.
And you're also starting the process later than you have in the past, so we should have the governor's numbers by the third week of January. So we should be able to do the revenue projections around the time that you're having the rest of your budget hearings.
Okay, so then we should know.
You'll have done some budget hearings, but you will.
But at least we'll know the revenue side at that point, and we can start plugging in and see the delta change as we get more proposals.
Right. I mean, it still won't give you House and Senate ways and means, but
No.
it's not going to fluctuate much from the governor's numbers.
Right.
So I guess I'd like to see that as early as possible.
I mean, preliminary should be able to come with our first budget meeting, right? I mean, we have the packet, we have the packet, we have the totals, so.
Yeah.
So really, on our first review, when we have the book, the total's already there. Revenue projections or estimates can already be plugged in. We just chose not to do the recap until the end. Can have it from the beginning.
Yep.
And I know, I feel like it's going to get lengthy and small. So instead of doing really small, tiny print to get it on one page, can we go landscape with big print? Because those of us with glasses really struggle to read it sometimes.
No problem.
Thank you.
And I don't want a binder, don't waste it. Don't waste those pennies, cents, and dollars for me.
No binder.
Whoever wants them, it's fine, but we change them off and off, and I'm going to look at the new version or whatever every time anyway, so.
Electronically, yeah.
You know, each person to their own, but just, that's just me. So whoever wants them, fine, but we'll get you a count rather than just printing them off in bulk.
Those of you that would like binders, please email Brian and let him know you would like one.
And I don't know if it's 100% feasible this time, but if it is, those are just big documents. Or we can just share them out, read-only potentially. And so as there's updates after meetings, they're just visible. You don't have to resend copies, we don't have to keep up with which version we have.
Is it Google Drive folder?
Yeah, OneDrive, or SharePoint.
Yeah, we'll figure out the logistics of that.
But we can share out the master and just keep, be able to view it. Obviously, we won't edit, could anybody slip Brian edit only? Okay.
Don't be top of the list, it is.
So some adjustments to the message that's clear about. It's flat or less, and identify areas that we can make changes and what those will look like for revenue and for, and/or savings. Yeah. Are we good with Brian taking that and turning it into the message and getting it out?
Yep.
Are you good with doing that for us?
Yep.
Can we also make sure that that is all included in their narrative? So when we are receiving it and reading it and reviewing it before the meeting, we will know that, you know, this department head is suggesting these cuts, or they're saying that this has to be increased, or they're suggesting this revenue source. So if it can be included in that too. And if it needs to be longer than a page, it needs to be longer than a page. I feel like this is going to be a budget season where the more detail they can provide, the better. Sorry, department heads.
And don't, don't just look at it and go, I'm flat, so I don't need to.
Yep.
Anything you can do, whether it helps reduce your budget or just offset increases that you have. I think all of it is on tape.
Am I reading this right, that this is on December 11th is the date this is due?
Correct. Yep. And it'll get together and hopefully out to us the week before New Year's? Is that what we were targeting?
Correct.
And then we'll have it. Capital will have it about, you know, to review on the 4th, and then for the first group review on the 11th. So we'll have a few weeks to have it in hand.
Could I ask, when those requests all come in, they're just requests, they're not even, haven't been reviewed? But it looks like the next finance committee meeting is not a month, almost a month late, January 8th. Can we be provided with copies of those requests when they come in, so we don't, we can look at ourselves?
The week between Christmas and New Year's, the overall request packet will be ready and available.
Between Christmas and New Year's?
Correct. Because they're going to come in on the 11th, and there's a week or two to put them together. Because they get to collate every single, everything, capital and operating and everything into a single master document, so.
Thank you.
I don't want to overcommit and say it'll be sooner. If it's ready sooner, as soon as it's ready, we'll let everybody know.
Right.
And print off and generate the binders for anyone who wants those and have them ready. They'll be done before New Year's for sure, so we at least have, you know, a little time before the meetings start, but we'll get them as soon as we can.
For finance committee, I assumed we would not want to meet pre-departmental hearings. If everyone feels that they would like to meet in between the time that the packet is given to us and before our joint meetings with department heads begin, just let me know, and we can get something on the calendar.
Isn't your eighth meeting already that?
Is it?
It is, because that Thursday is our first joint.
I take it back, we already have a meeting scheduled to do that.
Because capital has one on Thursday, the 4th, finance on January 8th.
I thought that was post-departmental meetings.
The select board's just going to do it on the fly with everybody.
Okay. So we're good then?
Okay. Okay, good on budget message, planning documents? Okay.
Section 13.
What did you say?
Section 13.
Is it bridge? Yeah, that's what I said. Discussion regarding Route 2 electrical service project request wastewater. Come on, Pete, please. I guess I was trying to find the number, I was just giving down it.
You can't have a section 13, that's bad luck.
It is.
Hey, it's even better tomorrow. Welcome.
Welcome.
So lay it out for us, please.
Okay, I don't know if everybody probably still remembers a few years ago, actually about two years ago, the line froze. So this is where this kind of stems from. The first year, because we didn't get electricity out there to run the heat trace. ran a generator, which was very, wasn't cost-effective, would pain people coming to fuel the generator. And in the meantime, we're still trying to figure out ways to get electricity out there. And due to scheduling, it took a while, and we finally got National Grid to send their engineer out, and they gave us, they gave us a quote, and then we got a quote from the electrician that we are using now. And this is where we come up with this project. The whole project is to get an electric pedestal out there that we can run the heat trace off. It'll be metered, so we get our bill from National Grid, and it'll keep that line from freezing again in the winter. Last year, we ran about 500-foot extension cords, and the mill was generous enough to let us plug in there, but it's really not the right way of doing it due to OSHA regs and stuff like that. So this is our project that we've been waiting to get numbers for.
No, I had the question, just jumping first, about procurement on this. Do we have to do, because combined over 10, do we have to do anything fancy or is it excluded?
National Grid is, you only have one distribution option, so.
So we can exclude that, and then it becomes less than 10?
Yep, that's business practice. We've already given prevailing wage schedules, so the prices reflect that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is the total cost, this $12,493.77, or is there additional cost?
That is the total of the two quotes.
Pete, why do you have it as a question mark for it being from retained earnings?
I'm trying to figure out where the money's gonna come from. Before the STM, I could probably have squeezed it out. Now I'm not so sure. So.
Well, retained earnings takes an STM, right? Because we can't, we can't spend from there without voter approval.
Good.
So, if timing is of the essence, that's not.
Right, okay.
Is this something that qualifies, a one-time thing, and really has to be done now? We can't wait till next July. Is this a qualify for reserve fund from us? Possibly? Or do you have some other ones to give? Or does it not qualify?
I mean, I look back to the Finance Committee if it qualifies. I mean, I think it does, but in terms of what else, I think it's either wait for an STM or fund it out of some of the maintenance improvement, you know, some of the wastewater lines that are meant to cover the unexpected, but it sounds like that we're already probably at a deficit, right?
Right.
And that doesn't help that, so we may be coming back for a reserve fund transfer for a shortfall in the spring, or to an STM just to try to backfill that, so. Because we don't know for sure yet. I mean, some of those costs are not fixed.
Do you know the balance in the reserve fund? Is it still at 50?
Yeah, you haven't spent it yet.
Okay. My concern is with the FY '24 budget being as it is, and we're just a few months in, if there was something else that came up that was much more pressing, and we had tapped the reserve fund, I guess I'd almost feel more comfortable if Pete can find it in his budget for right now and then to do something at the end of the year. I don't know what the rest of the Finance Committee thinks, or if we just want to go right to the reserve fund.
Well, my thought is if you're converting your budget, and then your budget is deficit, I don't know if reserve fund is typically to fund deficits in budgets, but could, on my weight, I'm sensitive to what you're saying, Deb. We don't know what's gonna happen in the next, you know,
Right.
10 months, but there's another place to take it from, and it's appropriate to get it from reserve fund later if we need to replenish that. Sounds like a conservative way to go. I'll object to that, but.
We're like 1/3 of the way through the year, even though it may not feel like it, so I don't know, just from a, from a numbers, 12,000 out of 50.
It does not feel like it.
Or, you know, it is less than 1/3 of that, right?
Okay.
So maybe, just my two cents.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
There'll be another STM for sure, maybe two.
Okay.
Yeah.
And it does for sure qualify and meet the definition of what reserve fund is for?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I mean, that's the cleanest. It can just be done, and we don't have to worry about it. We just had our free cash certified. Of course, that requires an STM for expenditure out of that, but knowing that this might be something where if we didn't do it out of reserve and we asked superintendent to take it out of the budget, a future STM could backfill out of, you know.
Backfill in retained earnings.
Yeah.
And, or free cash.
Either retained earnings or free cash, or, you know, so there is other pools.
Can even backfill the reserve, the, yeah.
Reserve?
Yeah, the reserve fund.
Yeah.
I mean, if it gets late or we are concerned, and we have an STM, we can replenish it.
Yeah, I mean, full well knowing that, I think the budget's gonna be tight, if not in the red, come the end of FY '24. I'd be leaning towards a reserve fund just to have that done.
It didn't freeze because we had the hundreds of feet of extension cords going. What did it cost us when it did freeze?
A lot.
What is it? We're at 60, 80,000, something like that, wasn't it?
I was thinking it was 20, oh, 40?
40?
It was a lot.
Yeah.
It was tens of thousands, not 12.
Right.
To repair.
Yeah, it needs to get done.
Yeah, and callbacks to come and keep the generator filled and running, you know, every day. It's just, that gets expensive on the operating side really fast, which was the other version, right? That was the year one version.
Right.
From my point of view, it's your call to how you want to proceed with it. If it was brought to us as a Finance Committee, I'd vote for a reserve fund, but if you find another way to do it, and you want to replenish that fund later from an STM, that's fine with me, too, so I'll be all in.
Where's Capital at on this request?
I would have no problem taking it out of the reserve fund. Anybody else have an issue with it?
Is that loosely a recommendation that we all believe we should do it?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, I'll make a motion that we request a reserve fund transfer in the amount of $12,500 for the Route 2 Heat Trace Project for wastewater. All those in favor?
Aye.
So we'll get you the form.
Okay.
But you know what it'd be, and then do you want to consider voting on it and authorizing it to be signed?
Do I hear a motion from the Finance Committee in regards to this?
I'd move we approve the reserve fund transfer for.
$12,500.
$12,500, when it gets here, sure.
Is there a second?
Second. And just discussion, if the reserve fund runs low for other things we don't foresee, we could ask it at STM coming up to replenish that a little bit.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstentions? Unanimous from FinCom. Let me know when it's ready and I will sign.
Thank you.
Get that over and get it signed.
Thank you. So now we need authorization to engage.
I was gonna say, you need more authorizations, don't you?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we authorize, I'm sorry, make a motion that we engage National Grid in the amount of $3,993.77 for Electrical Service in 97 East Main. And amend that to, and authorize.
Oh, yeah, we just put the authorization.
And authorize Pete Sanders to sign any and all documents.
I will second the amended.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You got the Pacharic one, too?
Yep. Just pull down there, make sure I get it right. Make a motion to engage Pacharic Electric for a job name, Irving Pole 72, a total sum of $8,500 for the Heat Trace Project, and authorize Pete Sanders to sign any and all documents.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's it?
That's it.
Thank you, everybody.
We, you have all the authorization, so we're good to move.
I need copies of all signed agreements that you send in, so just make sure I get copied on those.
Sure.
Thank you.
And you're good to go. The money will be forthcoming. We'll sign, we just get you the signing, but you're good to go with, without that, before that's done, because it's authorized already.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that was that. I mean, there's lots of other financial items on here that we're gonna discuss tonight, so you can stay in joint or not. It's up to all of you. We get the Farley Bridge proposal for engineering and stuff, so unless you want to go, I think we should continue together to hear these. Before we jump off of that and just kind of back to budget, I don't think we've really done anything yet to discuss the results of where we are now post-STM, right? And we need to figure out that there are some shortfalls that are, just exist now. Given the number of positions that have been hired for, that were not budgeted and that we cut the benefits budgets, for example, there's gonna be a shortfall there. And, you know, a lot of those were, a fair number of them were on the school side, and then there are some on the towns, the rest of the town side, too. Some of those, we've foregone the positions entirely now at this point indefinitely, given the situation. I would, my proposal is we should have a joint meeting with School Committee and talk through that, send them a note, let them know where we're at. I can get some updated numbers. We have where John was projecting we were, and we'd already pretty much identified or had allocated benefits money everywhere before, and there are many positions since then that have been added, so I think, send, my take would be sending a message to them, making it clear that where we are right now, we're at a shortfall to cover benefits for the number of positions that have been added in departments that were not budgeted on the benefit side. And look for their thoughts on, you know, how can they fund those positions that don't, we don't have funding for today. And same with the rest of the departments that we don't have that in the budget. Where do we get it from? Do they have it in their, you know, their budgets, their wages, et cetera, to cover it? It's maybe not that simple, but is there a different way you all would like to approach it, but I think we need to have that conversation. Because just benefits alone, it's not balancing unless it's coming out of other budgets.
Right, and that's fine for that one line. I think back to, you know, seeing the school getting a monthly expenditure report, knowing that FY '24 is gonna be tight for all departments. We should start looking, you know, at least monthly about where we're at, where each budget, each department is at, as far in relation to their full allocation of FY '24, and what capacity is left, and.
Does everybody get those, Deb, since I'm out every month?
But having that conversation.
Oh, you mean having it at the meetings?
Yeah, and not just, you know.
FinCom does not get those, I don't believe.
Neither does Capital.
Okay. Would you like to?
Sure.
Sure.
Okay. Consider it done.
Need to get my email fixed first.
Put in a ticket.
I'll email to you.
Okay, well, we'll, I'll put that message out, and we'll see if we can coordinate with school around a joint meeting.
Yep.
And I'll let you all know about that timing, and then, you know, any other areas and other departments that are affected by the benefit situation, we'll get in the same meeting. Discussion regarding Farley Bridge engineering proposal, sharing costs.
Nothing's really changed, other than our, our discussion, our willingness or appetite to engage and share the cost.
Yeah, so the proposal was the Farley, the wooden Farley, Farley Bridge, the wooden substructure, has some areas that need repair. And so we did a site visit with Wendell, went through it. The town of Wendell threw their road commission, engaged Gill Engineering, and have a design phase proposal to assess it and propose repair plans for where it is now. Design is expected to be about $31,183, so just over $30,000.
How much?
Just over $30,000, $31,183. And I'm gathering the request is to split it or share the cost with Wendell, given it's a shared bridge. I don't know where, that we necessarily have the funding for that on our side, and Glenn, I don't know if you have identified anything there, one way or another?
We have $5,000 in appropriate repair money.
We need that to potentially do some of the work that's.
The actual decking boards and the repairs that still. If we don't have the design, we don't need to do any work, potentially.
It's an interesting way to approach it.
It's a little. If we don't do this, I don't know that we need to spend that yet, but that's thought enough to get there, so.
We do have the consulting line. It's not a lot. It's about $10,000. So we have a place that we could pull some funding from.
Consulting in.
Select Board.
In the Select Board.
You don't have any consulting for the rest of the year, but.
It's only four months in. Glenn, any other, will you come up on, if you have any other ideas on where else we might pull it from, or what that would impact would be from your budget, if it's that important?
So we do have money that's still left over in our contract services line also, which typically is line painting, street sweeping, and catch basins. Probably, probably around $6,000, maybe somewhere near.
And those are all stuff that's already been done for the season, or you have some in the spring, right?
Yep, spring is line painting.
Do you know how much that usually runs?
Right around $6,000.
So you don't actually have anything.
You don't really have.
Not unless.
It's there, but you'd have to forego the line painting.
We would have to for all the line painting.
Or fund it sometime then from somewhere else.
Correct.
Or if we didn't. When's that usually happen?
Right after a street sweep-in, after bulky waste.
You're talking events. I talk in a calendar dates.
May.
I was gonna say. I was thinking in May, June, all right.
How often do we paint lines?
We do it every year. There's some towns that do it every three.
I know winter is coming, so this might.
Shh.
Okay.
We don't like that word.
I'm sorry. I didn't say the other word. So when the snow starts to fly.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You too.
Are they, are the lines right now in that dire need of being done? Is it something, I'm sure plowing kind of beats them up in obviously traffic, but do they have to get done? Can we wait a year?
We could probably wait a year. There's some, you know, the heavy truck traffic, Prospect Street, the corners, the corners wipe off the quickest.
Okay.
Well, do we do everything every year?
We do. There's some towns that will do the fog lines, and then the center lines the opposite year, and not everything at once.
Sounds like one of those items. Looks, you know, which areas might need to be done every year, which ones need to be, could be done every other, and sure, sure. Then there's nothing stopping us from doing those in July instead of May.
Correct.
Except scheduling, and if we just push them out and do it.
Yeah, I mean, if we're not sure, we don't want to wait a year, but we can wait a few months.
True.
So that's five.
Unfortunately, that's happened with the line painting companies, where you schedule it for the fiscal year, and it doesn't get done until afterwards.
Because they're booked or whatever, yeah, okay.
Weather.
Product. You know, the last two years have been a paint product issue.
Yeah. I mean, there's six-ish, there's five. I mean, there's six-ish, there's five and ten bridge right now. And that means we can't do anything but until we know what we need to do, we don't know what that number is anyway. Maybe it's not even close.
That five is, is there because the engineering is for a full rehab of the bridge, looking at the substructure and everything.
Correct.
That five is utilized for things like, there's a rotten deckboard on top.
Decking boards.
Pull that off and put another one on. So that is ongoing work that happens whether or not we do a survey of that bridge.
Yes, but this is also repair, it's not necessarily, we don't know yet without the assessment, it may not be as, it may not be a great, large project. It may be a, from a bridge standpoint, a smaller project to give it a better, longer life, or hold up better over time, right? I think. Well, if we pulled from the six on consulting and maybe from some of the repair, I mean, it gets us there, but then we may need to find money to do repairs.
Get money out of the highway road work, like also.
That's not allocated, that's as needed usually, right?
It's, yeah, but usually we like to use it for the bigger projects, but this was able to be used.
Was there...
Not in the big projects this time. So typically, that, that line is used to help with, like when we did River Street, it was all absorbed in that, some of those, the complete street stuff, there was money used for that.
Got it.
So what, this probably would have been used for Bridge Street and Maple Ave also, but it's not for, not being used for those projects, it's being used for what we need announced.
Okay. How much is that right now, roughly?
After, after the SDM, that one, that one, oh no, that didn't pass.
No.
That was passed, that passed, it was 50.
That did pass.
Because those came out of capital stabilization.
Oh, the five and the 50.
The five and the 50.
So the 50 was augmenting to that, right?
Correct, so as of...
As of the last monthly appropriation report.
And the race is on.
He's going to be there quicker than me.
He is not even close.
Yeah, his, his computer's frozen, so.
So this is, this is showing 57,000 in there, and I know there's been more taken out of there since. I think we, I think we spent like around 15,000, so it was probably like 40-ish, 35, 40-ish in here, plus the 50.
So 90. You don't have any, oh, sorry Scott, you don't have any projects hanging out there that you guys have completed that like has little pockets of funding? Like I know the truck, you saved a ton of money when you bought the newest truck, and like there's none of those hanging out that have little pockets that we can just get rid of?
Well, no, if it's, if it's a continuing appropriation, it has to be moved at a meeting, it can't be just spent unless it's the same purpose.
Correct, but I didn't know if we would have a meeting coming up, an SDM for any reason, where we could fund this out of something else for right now, and then close all those out and put it back.
There's almost 5,000, I think, in the mountain road. Drainage project one, that's left over from that.
I don't know if that's somewhere to take it from, but yeah, I hear you.
I was going to say that project is...
Far from done.
Far from done.
Right.
Better off leaving that there.
You started to say something?
I was going to say, while they were looking at this, I know this is extreme, but if we were to, you know, there's been some issues identified, but if we don't go ahead with the inspection and don't go ahead with repairs, what's the consequences of shutting the bridge down?
Jersey barrier, those we have.
I'm gonna, yeah.
So I sort of, I'm not, I'm not saying that's what we want to do, but also, you know, we can't spend money that we don't have, and we're looking at seven months left in the fiscal year, eight months. So to me, it's about timing. So we have funding sources that all require town meeting to, you know, we have, we have other pockets that we could get from. We have free cash, we could, you know, capital stabilization, there's, there's funding sources out there, but not readily available that we could tell Wendell, yes, let's move forward and do this today. Do we know what Wendell's timeline is? Have, because we haven't had a meeting with them, we haven't talked with them.
They're waiting for guidance from us.
On whether or not they want to move forward.
Do they have funding?
My understanding is they were working to identify funding on their side, and they were looking to know if we had done so on our side.
I'm throwing it out there as an extreme measure, because we, sure, we can move funds and then we can go to an SDM, but after the results of our last SDM, the taxpayers said with a resounding no, and we're left with these other concerns and these other huge pockets.
And unfortunately, the bridge does no service for an Irving resident other than to get to Wendell. You know, we have no houses on it, the pump station's on it, but the bridge is passing it, so I think that's a concern also.
So just...
True for Wendell too, right?
For, as a newer person to Irving, why are we in at 50/50? Is it simply because it's abutting our bank?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, you know, I sort of alluded to that, one of the last meetings, we talked about this, and I think Dan brought up a good point. While it may not serve the purpose of departments and function in that capacity, our residents do use it, our residents utilize that bridge.
Absolutely, I'm thinking, like I say, as the results of the last meeting, if it comes up to be that, that's, that's the reason why they don't, because it, there's no, there's no services over there for Irving, I guess we would look at it that way.
I would like to propose that we ask Wendell to push this out to FY25, and we continue to do deck repair as we have, as needed. We share the cost with them, we have a line item for 5,000 for that, and we get our ducks in a row. I'm not in a rush to drop another $16,000 undoing the survey.
Somewhat on the other side, just because we don't know where it's at to that level, and if it's bad and we wait and it gets worse, it's a lot more expensive, depending where it is. And we have, we did just add the additional funding to the road, road work budget, you know, line item. And we don't, I mean, it's for repairs and such and things like that, but, I don't know, I feel that way, and I don't think, I don't personally like the idea, for that stretch of road, you're almost the entire seven miles without any other way than Route 2, if that's closed. To get out of that section, there's no getting around it. So Route 2 gets closed down by the Trestle or something on the east end here, there. You know, there is a way around that's reasonable, otherwise you're so far back in either direction. And not that that's not impossible, but I don't like the idea that there's no other way now than east or west, if we close that. If we had to, like that's the worst case, but if we don't do this, and something significant deficit comes up and we have to, I don't like that idea. And I know it's not that we have a ton of money, so.
Yeah, and I understand that, and I'm just throwing it out there as an option to consider, because this is where we're at right now. I, I do benefit from that bridge, because it is a way from where I live to get to some places I like to go, some businesses I like to patronize that are, that's the quickest, easiest way for me to get there, but we are at hard choices time, so I just wanted to throw out for consideration. And if the group says that's a lousy idea, then that's a...
Fair idea. I don't know if it's the right idea, it's a fair idea. Comment? Okay.
So Mariah, the walking path that she's looking into from Irving to Wendell, if that bridge is closed, why are we, why would we even follow up with that? And that's a really great project for those of us living there in that area.
Can I comment just from a financial point of view? What you want to do, I'm sensitive to what Scott says, and Jim, we don't have a lot of extra money kicking around. On the other hand, you've identified some sources where you could get the money from, from transfer from budgets, which you could do. Financially, I don't think it's going to get any cheaper if you wait a year or two, and the bridge won't deteriorate less over time, it'll probably just get worse, instead of better. I'd see it eventually close down. I don't think anybody's threatening that at the moment, but if you repair it now, you don't have to close it later. From a financial point of view, I think it's going to go ahead and get the study and find out where you are, although I don't like paying for studies either. But without it, you can't really proceed, because until you get, here's what's wrong with it, you can't even estimate what's the cost to fix it. Financially, I think you should proceed with, get your study, but again, it's your choice, good reasons either way.
Capital.
Glenn, how long is a study like this good for?
I don't know, it's a wooden deck bridge, I don't know, I think that's probably what that study's going to be for, because a lot of it's the, it's the main beams that are underneath is, is where the rotten part is. A lot of the decking boards, the screws aren't even holding into those now, and there's spots you can see right down through where you shouldn't be.
You make me feel less warm and fuzzy every minute. All right, twist my arm.
To Dan's point, this is another example of what we were trying to explain before with the capital projects. Without something like this assessment from somebody qualified to provide it, we can't even tell you the prioritization of a proposed project like this, and what the scope is, and what the costs are associated, so that you can even have a conversation about when to program it, or you're not going to, and you're going to put a Jersey barrier. We can't even have the conversation.
Right, well, but that is the conversation until that guidance comes up. Do we want the potential that we just have to put a Jersey barrier there, because we don't know how bad it is until we do? Or do we want to fund understanding that because it's potentially higher on the list, depending on the result of that information, but that information costs money, right?
Agreed. The only other thing I would say in terms of these shared bridges, they are, they are enormous burdens, and we don't always get equal benefit, though we do have equal costs with our neighbors. But I do think that we expect our neighbors to show up to the table when we need to have those conversations, and I would encourage us to also show up to the table if we expect that back.
Glenn, do you think pulling $16,000 out of the road repair line would put you at a deficit where that wouldn't be functional for the rest of the year?
Probably come springtime, yes. Because we've identified culverts that need to be replaced after the last catch basin clean, catch basins that need to be replaced by springtime into early summer.
And those are anticipated to eat up the, the balance inclusive of the 50 that was just put in there?
Probably a good part of it, yes.
Like if we don't do them this fiscal year?
Some of them are, are fine to wait another year.
Right, I was going to say, can we prioritize the, you know, maybe not do all of them?
Do 16,000 less of them?
That's what I was, I was just thinking, you know, if there's, if there's a couple that could wait till... Right, yeah, if we could hold off on three or four of them until FY25.
Absolutely.
And just reprioritize when they get done.
Which would you recommend? Doing three or four, or getting the study done?
Getting the study done. Unfortunately, it's going to be the answer for both towns.
Yeah.
And for a longer, longer term project.
Yep.
I was really hoping this was going to wait until the Bridge Street wall and that work was being done, so that it could be closed at that point for, A, the, the big deck repair, if their study comes back and says, you know, there's only a few, few undercarriage boards that need to be replaced, but the decking ones all need to be replaced, that would be the time to do it, when the, when the road is shut down anyways.
Anyway.
So if the study can get done within the next month or two, and it falls in line for, for that project, you know, then both, both towns can be working on it while the road is closed anyways, and not be interrupted twice, if that's what they come back with, with their study.
Can FERC come and plan this, Brian?
No. Town owned bridge. You mean engineering wise?
I'm talking repair wise.
Oh.
I'm not talking engineering wise.
You're thinking like the tip, like the county tip?
Yeah.
It's possible, I mean, we, those, those plans are done so far in advance that you have to fight to get onto those plans, so that the question would be, would there be capacity that aligns with the timeframe?
What if you do the study and it shows that it can try?
Is it worth trying? It very well may be worth trying, it's just, without knowing exactly when we'll get the results back, how much it's going to cost, and whether or not it aligns with the need to do the repairs, whether we may have to close it, or do some other restriction on that bridge. In the meantime, waiting to get on that schedule, it's not an easy process, so I don't want to give the false impression that this is quick.
Yeah, but I think, is there a possibility?
That's my... There's always a possibility, so.
I think if we're talking about five, 10, 15 years, we'd like, you know, the further out, potentially, we have better, better odds, because they're planning it out so far.
Right.
So to get in, in short order is nearly impossible, but to get in the queue and maybe get in in the one of the cycles that, you know, five, six, seven years from now, maybe, but I don't know if that's viable based on what we hear back.
Yeah, we'll have to wait to see what the results are.
I think it goes back to finding out where they prioritize, and how much sooner or how much later than that date are we willing to go, so we can get into the funding queues? You know, for possible.
With the study coming up, it will at least give us an idea where we stand, you know, we can do a Band-Aid until that point, or if not, it's going to be, you know, astronomical.
Right.
I think this, the study should be done, unfortunately.
Do you need a formal motion, or are we just going to notify Wendell that we're, I mean, it sounds like, with your recommendation...
I think all the way around.
I'd lean towards, you know, I originally said, don't wait till FY25, but hearing that we have the funding source and the recommendation from the superintendent to prioritize this over the culverts, we have the funding source, we could notify that we're okay with moving forward at the 50% cost sharing.
They want us to sign a formal agreement, I could bring it back to you all, in the meantime, I could relay to them that we will, we'll proceed, and we'll honor 50% of that quoted price.
And if they don't have funding or can't find the funding, then, then we need to talk about different...
We'll have to come back to you all for that conversation.
Yeah, we're scraping to do it, and I understand we're not Wendell, but this can't be, this isn't about EQV, this is about sharing half a bridge.
Correct.
Yeah, and they lost a lot of roads this summer.
Yeah.
They did?
From the rain, they did.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. Well, we still have funds we haven't resolved from a few years ago, same, same boat.
Yep.
We'll reach out to Wendell. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Let's see which ones else on here you may want to listen to or stay for. Is there anything on the agenda you guys wanted to stay in joint for?
Most of it looks like procurement. I'm curious about the grant for Key Up in Jacks Brook.
Okay. And that, it was not something anticipated, so I did not put it in your brackets, I apologize.
That's fine.
How dare you?
For the select board. Where are my bookmarks? So... Were you going to say something, Scott?
No, if we were going to jump into that...
Yeah, why don't we, why don't we go ahead and do that quick? Review of proposals to apply for the 604B grant regarding Key Up in Jacks Brook.
Section nine? Yep. So I was chatting with Mariah a little bit about this before the meeting, and I believe that it says in the memo, there's no cost, there's a time commitment. The expectation is that we would help getting the word out, we would do walkthroughs, we would do landowner engagements, to ensure that, you know, anytime, there has to be the hands-on type of work done in the area, we have staff available to do that. But other than that, it's 100% grant funded out of the FERC. And the, assuming you're sending all that information, the memo, and...
Give it off to everybody right now.
Yeah, technically, Mass DEP, just Mass DEP 604B Water Quality Management Planning Grant Program, it's not FERC, but they would be the recipient of, and they would manage all the grant.
Yeah, they'd manage everything.
So is this to figure out how to stop the overflows and the flooding, or is this...
All of it.
Okay.
You'll see, when he sends it, it'll talk about the flowville geomorphic stuff... You'll see when he sends it, it'll talk about the flowville geomorphic study, the hydraulic and hydrologic study, the steam, stream crossing assessment, all of that. So even looking at, we talked about when we put in culverts and, or we narrow the stream under bridges and roadways, what's, what sort of erosion is that causing, they're gonna look at all of that.
All right.
So the way Mariah was talking about it is the previous grant that we applied for and got for, like the pollution issues, opened up the avenue for us to be a recipient of this one through FERC, and hopefully this one, when this is completed and they have a full study, will then open us up for future grants that may actually come into mitigation of some of those things found in this study.
Okay.
Yeah, there's like nine different bullet items, including like a Beaver.
Yeah, I'm just kinda looking at it.
Yeah, Beavers, I mean, it's everything.
DP wants, but I don't know if it'll fit.
So, yeah, it's comprehensive.
And so they're anticipating like some of the grant work up through June, awarding maybe in June of next year, and then doing the work in, starting in the fall of '24.
So I think what they need to know from us is whether or not the town is, is wanting this work to be done, is the first question. And two, would you be comfortable with the FERC planning to submit on our behalf for this work? As they noted, they would become the grant recipients and they would handle all the grant administration for it, but they would be doing it on our behalf. So they're not gonna spend time working on it if it's not a project that we're asking for or committed to. I don't think we can get the answers to the questions that residents and property owners along the Brook have asked for without some of this work being done.
Right.
So...
And the deliverable, as I see him on here, the short version, is an understanding of footing and where it is and where it was and things like that, as well as some best management practices, recommended areas to look at, potentially doing something with in the future to help with the, the Brook flow and things like that.
Right.
Which makes them potentially eligible for grant funding in the future as part of MBA and some others.
Right.
So it's like, identify some areas where we can get grants to, to then do those things later.
How, are you comfortable with the four bullets they have for town administrative responsibilities?
Yes.
I mean, it's pretty straightforward stuff.
Yeah, no, as long as they're willing to do the, the grant reporting and administrative work, which is the significant portion of it, and we just need to focus on...
Engaging.
Engaging engagement and making sure the town officials are engaged in the process, that's, that's reasonable.
Okay. I don't have any concerns, I'm looking forward to seeing it go forward.
Same. Same. Any other questions on it or anything?
So I will notify, I don't think we need a formal vote right now, as you saw, the RFP for this doesn't even become available until early December.
Right.
So I'm gonna give them the, the knowledge that you would like to proceed so they can start putting preliminary information together, and then I believe once they have a final grant application, I'm sure they'll run it past you.
Okay.
But I think at this point, we're okay.
Okay.
I will give them the, the notice to proceed.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Okay. With that, I'll make a motion to adjourn the joint meeting and continue the select board meeting at 8:44.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
No, just adjourned, I'm surprised you didn't stay in. It didn't catch my eye until just after, but it doesn't make sense to rejoin.
No.
And call it. It was a procurement, and they called that out as things that they saw in there that didn't, so.
Okay.
We can do the rest of this quarter.
Review of the water tank mixer installation project procurement? Yes, we can.
Yep.
Pete? So... Of the quotes received, the only one that was within the budget was proposing an alternative design mixer, or an alternative mixer versus the one that was specified?
Correct.
And it was allowed by the...
It is approved by DEP.
Okay.
And through the...
And the sub was allowed per the procurement, right?
As long as the specs, as long as the specs match.
Correct.
We always have to allow somebody to present equal...
An equal, an equivalent or better.
Or better, yeah. Right, but yes.
Right.
I read through the response coming back from...
Joe?
Joe.
Joe.
No, to Joe from Scott Kelly.
Mm-hmm.
Answering all of the concerns and all the questions.
Yes, and also, Joe gave me a list of neighboring towns that have these mixers. So I called all of them, you know, a couple people have had them in for, you know, two years now, some three years, they haven't had any problems. The only design difference is these have oil in them, it's a food grade oil, and so every three to five years, you'll, you'll wanna pull them out and change your oil. And usually you contract through the casco themselves.
Through the installer?
Yes.
I might have missed it, do you, did they say any sort of estimated cost on that service?
I might have missed it, I didn't...
No, they didn't.
Yeah. I was just curious, not that it's a deal breaker one way or the other, I just didn't know.
Was the, the other design would not require that?
No, it wouldn't. It would not.
Okay.
I was trying to do the math of year over year.
Yeah, I was wondering, yeah, right, right.
You have a cost saving of, you know, $40,000 upfront, but if you're, you know, every three years, if you're...
But I've, I've thought of something, the company that Scott Kelly works for actually bought out Underwater Solutions, I've been told, so when they come every five years to do our tank inspection, they're there.
I don't understand what you just tried to explain. Say that again?
He inspects the tank every five years.
Yes, every five years it has to be inspected.
We inspect the water tank.
I understand that.
Yes.
But what did the businesses that you referenced have to do with it? They bought this company, or this company bought that?
Yes. Aquis bought, took control of Underwater Solutions, who usually does our tank inspections.
So they're now one and the same.
Right, so the last time they were here to do tank inspections, we weren't having this problem, but at that point in time, tank mixers were a big, becoming an up thing in the industry.
Okay.
And I was asked if we needed one, and I was like, no, we don't have no problems. Well, don't open your mouth.
Little did you know.
Right.
Okay. So you're saying there might be some economy there, or we're having other things done, whatever frequency.
I mean, how, how long can it take to change your oil out of a mixer?
I don't know.
I dare not speculate if that's needed or how long that may take.
Right, right, but I'll, I'll reach out to Scott and see if that's something...
Just curious, yeah.
Yeah.
It's worth knowing.
I'm sure it is.
You know, if they turn around and say it's, you know, 15 grand every, that, that could be a deal breaker.
Right.
Yeah. Any, so you're comfortable with equivalency?
Yes, I have no concerns.
Questions, concerns?
No, they were answered in the back and forth. And they were substantially lower.
And so, do we need the diver version or no, or no, right?
To install it?
So there's the diver and the non-diver quotes?
Yeah.
We were talking about the non-diver version?
The diver was only, what, an additional thousand to put a diver in the water to make sure that, you know, during the install?
That's why I'm asking, which, which quote were we considering here?
I don't remember where I read that now, what page?
Okay, so according to Joe, Italian Bond, the first quote without the diver was the requirements of the quote, of the request.
So that you would only do it if you wanted to do the additional cleaning and inspecting while they were there?
So we could choose to, but regardless of that in comparison, it's for the first quote, but either way, they're the lowest anyway.
Correct, even with that, they're still the lowest.
Even with that, they're still the lowest, we can exclude it, they're the lowest, and still choose to do it.
Right.
Is there a take on...
When was the last time you had the tank inspected and cleaned?
Two years ago?
So, I mean... I can still just try to find...
We set aside five to do that, the tank.
Right.
And last time was a little over three.
Right.
I mean, it's like a thousand dollars more, and if we're gonna put a mixer in that's gonna, what, mix everything up, I, it seems like, why wouldn't we spend a thousand dollars while they're in there to get anything out before we start mixing it in? I mean, unless I'm way off on that.
Well, unless something has changed, the last time when we had the tank inspected, we only had like a 16th of an inch of sediment on the bottom, which is like nothing.
Yeah.
Some tanks end up with six inches of flood.
Sure.
I mean, we're, we're really good.
And that was after five years?
Yes.
I do believe we have a thousand dollar budget in your operating budget for tank inspection, so if you look that dumb over there, it doesn't even have to come out of this, we can take out the operating budget.
Mm-hmm.
We can do that.
I don't think, I mean, I don't think it hurts.
Okay.
To, it's literally a thousand dollars, right? That's what they added for the one diver to do the inspection and removal.
Correct.
Yeah.
And then they're gonna have to chlorinate.
Thousand fifty.
And, and part of DEP's request, they're gonna have to chlorinate the whole tank system afterwards.
Regardless?
Regardless.
And let's, if we do that, do we add five more years on the next time we need to inspect it?
Start a new, if we, can we start a new cycle?
I would, I would think it's the same inspection, but I'll, I'll find out.
Yeah, I mean, if it does, then I think that's almost a, a gimme, like, let's just get it all done in one shot and...
Right.
Okay.
And then we've just renewed our five year for less than $3,000, you know, I mean, two out of five years for a thousand dollars, pretty, pretty, pretty easy.
So that does not need to be part of this procurement award? That's a separate, we do that through the operating budget, so...
But we would award the alternate bid.
Right, because they gave a quote with an alternate bid, so we wanna make sure we awarded that so that the price didn't change when we go to do a second engagement.
That's just a funding source, right? Not the award.
Right, but that wasn't part of the procurement, so that's great, I could tell you that I'll throw in this extra service, that's not what I quoted and that's not what I asked for, so it's great that you wanna do it, but it's not part of what we ask people to provide you a quote on.
Okay.
Okay, so we award on the...
What we quoted.
What we quoted, and then we engage for additional based on their quote that day?
Exactly. Correct, there you go.
All right.
And there was a copy of the check, correct? They provided the...
Correct.
So make a motion, we award the water storage tank mixer project to Aquis Infrastructure Management, AIM, in the amount of $50,000.
$295.
Thank you, $295, $295 even. And to also engage them separately for $1,050 for the diver, additional diver. Who was joining the signing on this? Would be you or you, Brian, or Pete?
I'll handle this one.
Okay. And authorize Brian Smith, administrator, to sign all necessary documents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Take that one tomorrow. Thanks.
Thank you.
Review of the federal fiscal year 2021 CDBG housing rehabilitation loan program report, quarter ending September 30th, 2023. Vehicles 13 housing rehab unit, contracts for 13 housing rehab units, eight are done, five are under construction. There's four out in bidding and contracting right now. The grant will provide funding for a minimum of 17 units. 70% of the funds have been committed to projects and 72% of the funds committed have been expended, expensed, paid to contractors. How we spent more than we committed, I'm a little confused, but that'd be my only question on the report.
That may have to do with the administrative rate? Because it's part of the drawdown, but I can double check with them on that.
Okay. Yeah, just curious, because if it's paid to contractors, it wouldn't include their, their administrative, I wouldn't think, so.
I'll double check.
Yeah. Other questions?
No.
Also reminded the executive director and the program director that you all need a meeting in the coming months because our agreement with them to administer this program ends in March. So we need to start our conversation about a multi-year agreement on this.
Okay. Review of proposed amendment for traffic rules and regulations.
This was just adding the no parking on Wheelock, right?
That's correct. So that's in table...
Schedule one.
Schedule one.
Schedule one, yep.
Wheelock Street North Side and the layout in a southerly, southwesterly direction for 165 feet.
Do we need to carry this for three?
Three, or...
So you didn't, did the approval of the, the rules and regulations?
We've done most of these.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Any concerns?
None.
Carry for next meeting?
Okay.
Yeah, I crossed that off and jumped past it, my mistake. Discussion regarding snow plowing, backup contract proposal?
I think I was planning to talk about it while he was sitting there last time.
Sorry, Glenn, kept going down, going, I know there's one more for you.
And that's the printed piece of paper.
Yeah.
Yep.
We're all here for a good time.
Let me know. Nevermind.
So ever since COVID, we've never had a backup plan if people are out sick on vacations or whatever. So last year it asked for the same thing for a backup plan for plowing. We have a, we had an employee last year from the fire department, Ryan Betters, who stepped in quite a bit to help to cover sick time, vacation times, and any unforeseen's. So, and again, as we're going into another year, those things come up again. So we reached out to Johnson asphalt paving again, they have provided 125 an hour for just a, an operator in a power angle plow, or 150 for the operator of the truck and a sander, plowing sander. But it would be our material through it, of course, so for, and do this, I would recommend that we, you know, do the one with the sander. It'd be no different than one of us being out there, plowing tandem also, we would have our own material.
And really, COVID's brought it to late, but we never had any before that either.
We'd never had any before that. The long storms, whether it was a 10-hour storm or 40-hour storm, the same, same highway department people were out there through the whole storm.
Now, would you, on, on say large storms where you, you had full staff, but you're talking about a 24, 30-hour storm that's just relentless, utilization of Johnson and anybody else that you had to be able to give...
Correct.
Get people out of the, the trucks and still maintain plowing roads as needed?
Yes, Jeremy Capaldo and Ryan Betters have both offered to be on that list again.
To do that same...
Yes.
Service?
Yep. And last, last year, the understanding with Chief Wonka was that if Ryan was out plowing and there was a call, then he needs to go to the call.
Right.
And so it's gonna be the same understanding.
Yeah.
They can provide how many?
They could provide two.
Okay.
You know, as of right now.
Yeah, because I mean, depending on how long a storm is and how much we have people Yeah, because I mean, depending on how long a storm is and how much we have people rotate out or don't.
Correct.
You might need at least two just to get downtime for two guys on a cycle, right?
Right, on a cycle, yeah.
Okay. And part of this is getting to a point where we can kind of maybe firm up what that is, like max hours and stuff like we have in other areas.
Mm-hmm.
You know, except in emergency, but just in general, trying not to have constant, you know, 24 hours, whatever, right? I mean, we've tried to set some limits on uptime for safety and health, you know.
Yeah, it's, it's a tough one to give up the hours to for it because, you know, we hold very high standards in how we take care of the roads. And I know the residents like it and expect it, so I would hate for any of that to go backwards through all this also. So yeah, to have the extra help would be good. I think we would still see some of us still stay on, also just to make sure.
But in light of the decisions were made after the STM was staffing, I'm in favor of this from a safety perspective with those prolonged storms with the heavy. I mean, whether it's operator fatigue or not being able to keep up with the storm on a heavy one and maintaining safe roadways.
Yeah, and it may be to the point where we're fully staffed, you know, and just need a hand because of the rate of the storm.
Right.
And just need an extra truck or two, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I was asking for all of that, whether it's officer save, staff member safety, getting you guys off the road for a break, whether it's covering for days off or a third crew.
Snowmageddon.
Out there doing, you know, taking the load instead of just having one crew on either side. Or, you know, you do a two-man crew on each side and maybe this is a three-man crew on each side.
Right.
You know.
And we haven't.
And utilize any.
We haven't added any depth really, so we don't have the depth to.
Right.
To even, to do that without help, right?
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
So. I hear what you're saying, but don't be surprised at some point when we start setting some or try to get to the point of setting some max hours behind the wheel.
Yeah.
I get it, I understand. Some of us have just been doing it for so long and you're committed to it and.
It's nothing about being committed, trust me. You guys have been and we appreciate it, but it's just not good for anyone and we don't want to do that to our people.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
We like our roads, but not at, not at your expense.
I'd say, you know, nothing more than 48 hours straight.
Yeah.
Perfect.
I mean, 60 is rough.
Yes, it is.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. We're joking, but we're not.
Yeah.
Anyway, no retainer? They're going to be available?
Yeah, just, just notice is all it is.
How much?
They just said give them, give them enough notice. So if it's a vacation, it's an easy one.
Yeah.
If it's a bigger storm, if it looks like it's predicted way out, then we could call them, you know, you know how the weather, I mean, you know, they predict, you know, a week out when there's a big storm coming.
They do, and then we get some rain, you know.
Yeah.
Well, that's.
So that's, that's the best part of that too, you know, so if we know four or five days in advance, you know, we can call them and get them.
Get them in rotation and planned for it, okay.
Yeah, between the staff and, and them, yeah.
Let's not hesitate to bring them in when it makes sense or we know. Let's not do it as a, oh, just in case. I mean, I think we, let's plan to do it to get a good cycle. For anything that's going to be running more than, you know, 12, 16 hours.
Yeah, the only question I have is, I know they have a four-hour minimum. I would like some clarity on if we, there's been times where we're on standby because every weather forecast said we're getting 12 inches of snow and then we get three hours of rain and we get no snow and we didn't need them. Is that still a four-hour minimum? So just some clarity on that.
So if I call and put them on?
If you called them and said, we need you, we're going to need you here on Friday evening. We're expecting, you know, 12 inches of snow on Friday evening and they're.
Probably cycle you guys in for eight, 10, 12 hours mid-storm or something, right?
Yeah. And then nothing happens. The storm never, it passes right by and it hits, you know, Northfield and everywhere else, but it passes right by Irving and we don't need them.
That's what we're looking for this year.
Is, right, I understand that. But I just want to know, is that four-hour minimum from the time that we put them basically on notice?
Yeah, I can find out.
Yeah, just want to clarify.
And I would assume it's times the number of trucks that we need, right?
Per truck, yeah.
And I'll have their insurance information tomorrow too. The insurance company will be emailing their, their binder over.
Yeah, I don't, it's not a deal breaker, I just, I need to know.
Yep.
Just for planning purposes.
Right. Yep.
We'll consider, we'll continue in this, in this meeting and get this all finalized for you all.
Yep, I think we just need the answers, we're going to do it.
Yep.
Right.
Okay.
You need anything formal on that?
We'll finalize, we'll follow up with them and if it makes sense to draft a simple MOU, then we can bring it back to you all for approval.
Okay.
Yeah, just identifying what that is, if it is a fixed minimum.
And we have no problem meeting their.
10-day.
Payment within 10 days, the way our.
That's, that's on all of their stuff. They've done work for, in the town before and they know the town's schedule.
That's a standard thing they put on there. They did the work for us on River Road.
And every invoice those 10 days and we always respond back that we'll pay in 30.
We'll pay you like in 30 days.
But they're writing this up, don't write that on there, like, you know, we can't do it.
Yeah.
Like, you know, or as soon as possible, like something, you know, let's.
Let them know that municipalities don't honor 10 days.
Yeah, no, they're aware of the payment cycle.
Yeah, okay.
Even if they were to invoice on the day of submitting, it's still not going to be 10 days.
Right.
Be close.
If you write it up, write it for the plowing sander, you know, what we, what we would want.
Yep. Yeah, can do that.
Okay, and what is notice, like firm up that stuff?
Yep.
We don't need to know that necessarily, but you do.
Yeah.
Good?
Good.
Good, thank you all.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Nope.
You got anything else for us?
Run.
Yes, run, yeah, really bad idea.
Section 11.
Yeah, uh, yeah. Review of the FY '23 Financial Audit Professional Services Proposal.
Single audit, this is every year, isn't it?
So the, the 16,000 portion is, the 4,000 portion is the federal single audit if we need to conduct one. Let's see, get back in front of me.
Do we need one this year?
So Debbie and I have gone through to do our best estimate and it looks like we're just under the threshold. So $750,000 in a year of federal funding triggers that and we believe we're under the 700,000. So I don't believe it's going to be necessary. We were close, but I don't think it'll be necessary this year.
Okay, and we have a budget for that, so.
Correct.
Is that up from last year to 16? I don't think it really.
I believe they increased the 16 last year.
Last year, okay.
Yep.
If, hopefully when, the TruStreet Bridge funding and all that, is that federal? That tip money partly?
It's all, a large portion of it's federal, but I believe that's going to flow through the state and it won't flow through us.
So it won't trigger?
It goes off the federal.
Trigger. Okay.
It only counts if it's flowing through our bank accounts.
Got it. So they'll pay it even though we're managing it all, they're paying the bills?
Correct. That's my understanding of how it's going to work, but this is my first.
Hey, I'm fine with it. That's a quick way to 750, so I just was curious, but yeah.
We assume that between the ARPA money, the ESSER money at the school, the title, all the title funds that they receive at the school and the CDBG funds, we, we were feeling like we were going to hit 750 this year. But so far it appears that we're underneath, but we're going to check one more time just in case we need it.
Okay.
You don't need anything at this time, right?
Do you need a motion to engage or not yet?
If you are comfortable making the motion to engage at least for the, the initial audit, if I need the single audit, I can come back to you all and we can amend.
Concerns?
None.
We talked about auditing the school, that'll be a separate audit, those school funds.
Yeah, I need direction on the scope so I can get an accurate price as to what that's going to cost, all of it. I want to be, I want to make sure we're clear with our expectations.
Okay.
This is a standard financial audit that our debtors want, citizens would want, you'd want to see, so.
Make a motion, do you want me to?
Make a motion to engage Scanlon and Associates for financial audit.
Fiscal '23.
Yeah, fiscal, it's fiscal '23 in the amount of $16,000. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Let's just go right by it. The supposed equipment request, assessors filing cabinet first read. Steel filing cabinet estimated $100 no longer need. Questions?
Nope.
Carry to next meeting?
Okay.
In minutes, we're passing over until next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? Did I skip anything else?
All that I see.
With that, a move we go into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the chair so declares, which I do, ask me wastewater and water unit. And immediately following, move into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the chair so declares, which I do, and EPBA local 121 police unit. We will not return to regular session. Is there a second?
Second.
Brian, will you call the roll?
Selectman Lloyd?
Aye.
Selectman Bastarash?
Aye.